Notice hereby given the city council of city Alpine, Texas will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, April 6, 2021 in the city council chambers at 803 West Holland. And person attendance will be limited to 15 people total, including elected officials, staff and public. And via Zoom conference at the city of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login detail may be found at www.cityofalpine.com. For the purpose of considering the attached agenda. The notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.043, Texas Government Code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after determination of a form and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meeting comments and questions, rules and listed in the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes for a person. Please email your name to geocaldaron@g.cialpine.tx.us. If you have a petition or any other information pertaining to your subject, please email to the city secretary beforehand. All names, all names wanting to make public comments for the meeting will be queued up and given to the mayor at the section of the meeting. The mayor will call all most individuals one at a time and our meeting moderator will take you off mute to make your comments. This will function the same as our existing sign up sheet in council chambers. Please note, you must include your full name first and last, along with what ward you reside in or have business interest in. If you do not live or own property in the city, please state that in your email. State law generally prohibits a council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and or city council members may call a point of order to stop personal attacks. If Joe continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in the meeting, they may be barred. I now call this meeting to order. Right to allegiance, please rise. Our right to allegiance. To flag.
United States of America.
And to the Republic. Which is since one nation under God.
Let me try again.
I heard the Texas flag.
To the Texas ones today.
Hey. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum and the notice was posted at 2:00 PM on April 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Gio?
No public comments were received for today's meeting.
Okay, let's go ahead and I've got one recognition and it's a proclamation of Alpine Safe Digging Month. The state of Texas, county of Brewster, city of Alpine, proclamation Alpine Safe Digging Month. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Texas is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage and threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the federal commission, communication commission designated 811 to provide excavators and homeowners. A simple number to contact utility operators to request a location of underground lines at the intended dig site and whereas the Damage Prevention Council of Texas, a stakeholder driven organization dedicated to prevention of damage to underground facilities of 254 Texas counties promote the national 811 notification system in effect and to reduce these damages and whereas damage prevention is shared responsibility by using safe digging practice. Persons living and working in the city of Alpine, Brewster County and Fort Davis County can save time and money and keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Now therefore, I address problems, mayor of the city of Alpine, Texas to hereby proclaim behalf of the city of Alpine and the Damage Prevention Council of Texas, the month of April 2021, as Alpine's Safe Digging Month. And encourage excavators and homeowners throughout the city of Alpine and Brewster County to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is not, is no accident. In witness where, where I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal, the city of Alpine to be affixed on this sixth day of April 2021. I will address Ronalds, mayor of the city of Alpine, Texas. Okay, and I will go to reports. I don't have a report. City attorney report?
No report, your honor. I mean, mayor, sorry.
I guess I'm a king now.
Too much.
Moving right along, city manager report.
Uh, yes, mayor and council, I do have a report this evening. Let me share my screen with everyone. Everybody hear me okay? Everybody see that?
Yes.
Perfect. And I will, I'm just gonna have to say this because we have the proclamation for safe digging. 811 and what happens today, the subcontractor for AT&amp;T bores through our water line, putting in a new fiber to the game room over on Murphy Street.
Oh, get after him.
Yeah, yeah. So he probably not gonna subcontract for AT&amp;T anymore.
I think might have been his last, his last dig today.
And, and you know, normally we promote the safe digging, right? From a gas perspective, because you know, you bust a gas line. I mean, I've seen people die from that. You know, water lines, sewer lines are just messy and nasty, but
Did they just not call?
Didn't call. No spots. No. Yeah. No, no spots. So I mean, certainly they'll, they'll pay our, our restoral fees, but you know, they'll get a fine for it as well.
And that's written on their blue, on their print when, before they even start the job.
I know, I know. They get into a rush. So, well, let's talk a little bit about COVID. The, uh, I was actually very pleasantly pleased this morning when I pulled up the stats on Brewster County. Forty-two point four percent have had at least the first dose of the vaccination. Of course, we had the services, the Johnson and Johnson single vaccination over at the emergency center, op center today. So you know, very positive. We have had some case count pop up. Certainly, we're very aware of that from a, from a city perspective. I myself was one of the six that tested positive at around May 19th, or I'm sorry, March 19th through March 22nd. Currently today in Brewster County, we've got 19 active counts and, or 19 active cases, I'm sorry. As well as three people in the hospital. You know, stepping back on the vaccination, like I said earlier, we're a little over 40%. At, at the state level, we're 27.9%. So we're, we're close to 15% better than the state. I think that's a tribute to just the focus and attention of our residents, seeking out, asking questions, getting queued up with the work that our hospitals doing. The work that the clinic is doing across from the high school and just, just that robust focus on it. You know, schools, universities are still really carrying through with their education curriculum on campus. I was looking at the Saul Ross stats this morning. They've only got, I think, one active case, zero administrators. So this is through 12th day of classes, what they call it, but the, the key stat there is right now through the spring semester, they only have 38 cumulative cases, whereas last fall they had 321. So if they continue on this pace, definitely far fewer this semester. And then like I said earlier, you know, city staff, we did have several cases and that somewhat preempted Scott's report this evening. Scott, unfortunately, three of those cases were in his department. So it's, it's kind of divide and conquer. And then I think this morning with the subcontractor with AT&amp;T really causing us to have to shift all of our staff over there. So anyway, we're, we're working through it. I think we've, we went ahead and shut down the lobby again. When we had some cases, especially with myself and then two other staff members here at city hall, we just felt it was the right thing to do. We've been spraying, normally we spray once a month in city hall, but we've accelerated that up to once a week. And just, you know, keep people spread out. Teams doing a really good job backing each other up. Very, very pleased. I mean, just very pleased with the attitude and the energy that we're getting from, from our staff and working together to fill the gaps. And I think that's important. Think I shared this earlier today, wanted to make sure we got it out on the slides relative to that single shot COVID vaccine earlier today. I did, I, I have not seen an email stat on whether they did all 200. You know, I drove by there middle of the day and I didn't see a long line, you know, normally we've got a pretty good line going along Holland. So, so my guess is they probably got close to the 200.
This morning about nine o'clock, I only saw like five vehicles there in line and a couple of walkthroughs. So it kind of started little slow. Hopefully it picked up this evening.
Yeah. Moving forward to our pool. The, of course, last summer, we never did get to open the pool. Plan this year is to open the city pool. It's a wonderful asset. We've got tons of families that just really love having the pool there. Our normal hours that we project out to is keep the pool open noon to five. Seven days a week for the, for the kiddos and the families to use and then do a lap swim in the morning at 11 to 12, Monday through Thursday, and then do an adult swim, 5 to 6 PM, Monday through Thursday. And then we reserve the scheduling Friday, Saturday, Sunday evenings for pool parties. Couple hours long, five to seven. That's very popular within the community as well. Lorena just came in before the council meeting, let me know. We do have eight lifeguard applicants so far and it, I was really worried about that. So what we did is we adjusted this year instead of having the lifeguards pay for their certification, then after they work so many hours. We pay it back. I just said, you know, let's just pay it all upfront. That way, if we can get 12 or 13, then I can, you know, run the schedule here. We do already have a supervisor identified. He's, he's a returning lifeguard, spent with us for a couple of seasons. Responsible young man. And I think, I think we're well on the way to have a good, good season this year. The Saul Ross pool, you know, we're all kind of competing for that same grouping of lifeguards out there. What I understand, they may adjust a little bit on how they're gonna administrate amongst the pool, but ultimately, we'd like to make sure we see both pools open because they do get heavy usage here in Alpine, so. Our original target was Memorial Day weekend. We're still bartering with Kay on the training side. She may not be able to do the training until the week after Memorial Day. If that's the case, then we just won't have enough certified people to open until, till the training's done. Now, on the flip side, when they come immediately out of training and there's no gap and they immediately start working, that's, that's good for the kids too, so.
So potentially you're talking the first weekend.
Right, that June 5th, 6th. If, if we don't, if we can't convince Kay to do the training a little bit sooner, then, then it'll be the 5th, 6th.
Also, loss is pushing for one day.
Yeah, we just can't really do May because our our labor pool is still mostly all in school. Moving forward, just wanted to give an update on the affordable housing, some of the stuff we've, we've talked about recently. Of course, I think all of us are tracking Let's Gia to see when, when they will open. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not used to seeing a small apartment complex like that take two years to get built. But I think that's a tribute to some of the challenges that people have have experienced specifically over the last couple of years between COVID, between the pressure on supplies. And then also the group had underestimated some of their ability to get contractors in labor down here into Alpine. But that is getting very close. Those units should be nice. And I see the advertising going on on the web relative to, to showing interest in that. Marcy Tuck and I also hosted a call with John Perkins from the USDA and that originally, we were trying to work with John on a public-private partnership concept and what grants would be available to, to allow the city to pay for infrastructure. Right now, the USDA just doesn't have anything specific to that. But what morphed out of that conversation was a program where we could get up to $150,000 to help existing property owners restoring their properties. When we go around Alpine, we see a great need for existing homeowners to be able to, to restore their properties. Many of them just need a little bit of access to some dollars to help clear up plumbing issues, electrical issues, roof issues. The, the other nice thing in, in, Marcy and I then started talking to Peggy O'Brien at the COG. And she's been, she was the one that handled the census for the area. Now she's working on some economic development initiatives for the general region. And in that discussion, we thought, you know, if there was another community close to us that also wanted to go after those types of grant dollars. The grant itself allows for up to 20% in administrative fees. And if we had somebody that was just focused on the administration side of this, we could really be more effective and more efficient in deploying the, the dollars as they come in because you've got to have certified vendors that meet those requirements. They're not gouging prices, things of that nature. And so we're working through that, that piece with Peggy right now. She and I talked last Thursday. I just wanted to brief counsel on this and then I'm gonna start pushing on getting that grant language together for counsel to review. May not be at the 20th meeting, but definitely by the first meeting in May. One of the other things David Hale and I have been doing is reaching out to some larger developers as well around apartments and things of that nature. It's just not yielding any results for us. Certainly supply costs and just the remoteness of Alpine. Which, which really brings us back to this, you know, other concept of fourplex, sixplex, eightplex. And, you know, really want to work back with planning and zoning so that we can look at our zoning across the city and see what else we can implement to make this more appealing. And I do believe we've got folks within the Alpine community that have dollars and are willing to invest in this type of concept, whether they continue to hold on to those units or they build them in the sense of, of selling it to somebody to be an owner occupied. And we've got at least three pockets of land right on the perimeter of Alpine that, that's either city of Alpine or could be annexed. That, that these, you know, planning and zoning felt that these were the right sections, we could certainly go after. Close proximity to utilities and that's a huge game back for us, so.
The other, we took some of the R4s and converted them to R3.
Yes.
We've got a ton of R4s. Some of those are in the life of vehicles themselves, so that as well.
Right.
Since they're R3s, I mean, since they're R4s. That's, that's all I want to go work on.
Yes, yes. And the conversion of some of that R4 to R3 actually would be healthy. I think for the people that own it, you're gonna have a much better asset for a longer period of time. And the people living in those units are gonna have a much better living experience in them too. So, so very excited about the work going on there. Moving forward, we've got, of course, the 1.9 million trillion, trillion American Rescue Plan Act. And what I, what I wanted to box out here for counsel this evening is what are the, you know, when we hear 1.9 trillion and then, and then we hear this messaging out in the media that says, hey, local cities are gonna have money. What does that really mean, right? I think Senator Gutierrez sent something out a few weeks ago and it showed city of Alpine, $1.3 million, right? So then I get a whole bunch of phone calls, hey, where's the $1.3 million and what's it gonna be spent on, right? And so there is a significant chunk of money, as you, as we can see here, there's actually well over 480 billion, close to 500 billion or that, that, that are dollars that we can tap into. 350 billion are state, local, tribal, territorial support. And that's a 60-40 split, 60% is going to the states, 40% is going to the local governments. And I think that's where you really, those dollars that Senator Gutierrez had, had shared, that's where this is gonna come from. Now, we're still asking a lot of questions, Megan, myself, Marcy, on how do we access in, how do we apply for funds? Because one of the other pieces that we're still working on is the stimulus dollars from last year. We submitted receipts and things in that we haven't received full reimbursement on. And so we want to make sure as we're spending the dollars that we're also ingesting them back into the city coffers. And so we're working through that piece right now. In fact, I talked to Peggy O'Brien on Thursday because I'm getting a little concerned that the stuff we submitted early January, we haven't got, got the money back. So we're pushing, you know, almost 90 days on that right now. And we're gonna get some support from our COG to get those dollars back. And then continue moving forward with asset restoration with new existing dollars for the, through the American Rescue Plan Act. We'll also continue to go out after grants like what we received to advertise and promote the midweek music and mercantile. Even though that's not a high dollar amount, it's allowed us to pay for musicians and advertising. And as we're, we're starting to see, our attendance there is double what it was last year. And I think as we hit the summer and those vaccinations go up, we're probably gonna see that number triple. And so we'll continue to grab dollars because that kind of stuff is we're able to, to have these types of events within the community, people are coming out spending dollars, we're getting more tourists through here. And, and that's driving money for our local economy. The, the community development block grant formula, you'll see what Marcy and I are triggering on that with a couple of the action items this evening that are in your packet. We're gonna go back after the, the, the grant dollars through CDBG for sidewalk restoration downtown. Our application last year wasn't approved, but we're persistent, right? And so we're gonna go after those dollars again this year. And then a smaller amount of 10 billion on, on capital projects fund. That's more of local education, health monitoring, things of that nature. But we certainly want to keep our eye on that because we have done things like buying the thermometer checks, buying the hand sanitation dispensing stations that we're putting out at the ball fields. And all these little health monitoring and, and health safety things, we're trying to make sure we're not spending taxpayer, local city taxpayer dollars, but we're grabbing some of these dollars from, from the federal stimulus.
Is there any sense, Eric, about how these dollars can be allocated based upon population, which says we're not gonna get anything? Or are they gonna base upon average household income, which we ought to do very well there?
Will do well. So bucket one, I think is, is gonna be more based on population. So we'll get a small amount of that. Then the CDBG and the capital projects are gonna be based on requests. And that's where we're really trying to queue up, especially like that sidewalk grant deal. I mean, that could be a quarter million dollars in sidewalks for the city. And I think it goes back to our decision a year and a half ago to bring on a grants coordinator so that we had focused effort on this and didn't get spread into different areas with our finance team that, you know, especially now with these types of dollars available nationally. We've got a, we've got to forcefully go for them. All right. Last topic I wanted to cover this evening was the taxiway paving at the airport. Several hangars built back in the 2018, early 2019 that really required an extension of the taxiway. Philosophically, where we're working from an airport perspective and Abel and I and Scott had met a few weeks ago, I guess it was what, the 18th, 19th of March and met with one of the individuals from, from the airport advisory board to on the city providing the paving on the main arteries. And then the folks that are building the hangars provide the, the last bit up to their hangars. We've got a few hangars that were built that the city hasn't built the arteries yet. Got a basic quote from Jared Dirtworks, about 57,000 to do that work. It's gonna require us to go out to an RFP. So Megan and I are working through that piece right now. I'm sure a, as always, Jared Dirtworks will probably be the only one that will bid on it. But we've already identified the line item that will take those dollars from. And also, once that's done, we'll just transfer that asset to the airport. So that's, that's where we're working through on that. Eddie will talk a little bit about paving because he's up next. All right. Any questions for me before we?
No questions, Eric, but an update on the vaccination step. I just texted up they vaccinated 100 people.
100, okay. So they used a half of them. Okay. All right. Eddie, are you ready?
Yes.
All right. I, I, I will forward through. So you just tell me when to move forward, okay?
Will do. So good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. We, we got a few slides to show you guys of some of the winter projects we've been working on before we actually get started on our seal coating. We worked with, along with Alina and the Environmental Service Department, planting trees along Hendrix. I'm pretty sure you guys have noticed that. We put some, installed some bollers as well, some irrigation. And we're, right now, we're actually working on some fountains that we're gonna have along Hendrix and inside the park as well. The fountains we're working on are pretty neat. Not only is, is, is it a water fountain for, for the public and for their pets as well. So that should be pretty interesting. The other project we are doing at the parking lot over there by, next to the swimming pool. We completed phase one, which consisted of, we did four rectangles, eight by 60, which it, each rectangular holds like four trees and then some squares with gravel so it can take all the water when it rains. The second phase of that would be, will come in probably around June or July and come back and seal coat the whole parking lot, restripe it. As you can see there, we decided to go with, with angle parking. The way it used to be, it was just straight parking. It would accommodate a little bit more cars, but we, you know, we've noticed it's hard to, especially with the extended cap trucks and all that, it's, it's hard to exit the parking lot. So with this angle parking. So with this angle parking, as you can see all those arrows, we can empty out the, the parking lot within, you know, 20, 20 minutes at least. So we decided to go with that. We, we can accommodate at least 50 to 60 cars still. So we maybe lost like 10, 15 parking spots, but that's why we decided to go with that. And then, once those trees start growing, I think it's gonna look very nice. Okay, Eric. We also were busy pruning the trees at the park, along with the park department. We actually, it took us at least like two, three weeks to prune most of the trees. We are planning to plant at least, at least 20 trees in the park. So some of the trees are, you know, they're getting old, they're drying out. They still have a, a few years left in there, but that's our plan to do at, at the park. Okay. We also were busy at the Sunshine House. We, as you all know, we're gonna, they're gonna rebuild the, reconstruct the Sunshine House. We did the back part of it, which consists of, you know, sanding the walls, painting. And this is just the before and after of it. I think the subcontractor is gonna do the, the rest of the flooring, the electrical and the lights. So I told Megan that we had some spare time during the winter, so we went ahead and, and helped them out with what we could with that. Next slide, Eric. And then just, this is the finishing part of it, you know, this is the end result of it. We painted the walls, like I said. So once the floor is in and the new lighting is in, it's gonna look pretty nice. This is to give you guys an idea of what's going on there at the Sunshine House.
When will we be done with that, Eddie?
Sir?
When will you finish the Sunshine House?
Uh, we're actually about two, three days, this week, we should be out of there in this week.
Oh, great.
With our part. Yes, sir.
And so then what's next on that, Eric?
So then we have U Construction coming in to take down half the wall in that front foyer area.
Yep, yep.
And that, the billing, the utility billing, when you come in that front door, there'll be a nice big lobby area for people to sit. And then utility will, billing will be off to the right as you come in. So U Construction is gonna finish that area for us. And then Megan's got, I think Mitchell's is doing the flooring. And we've got local, you know, electrician. Big Ben Telephone has gotta run drops for us. She and I are talking about them being in there no later than the end of May. So that's, that's what we're targeting. We're just really excited about, you know, progressing on this and breathing some life back into that building.
So you'll have utility billing and finance?
Utility billing and finance.
Eric, is that a state historical building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, most people then will do their work, will go interface with the city over there, is that the strategy?
That's correct, for their utility billing. I am gonna go ahead and have, bring our building services. So David Hale and his team here at a city hall.
Okay.
The reason why I wanna do that is our water department is just so busy. And having David and his staff up front is just, they're not conducive. And he's better for, plus that parking lot is so congested there. Getting them here will be wonderful. And I am contemplating bringing our municipal court, so the judge and our court clerk over here as well. I have fully decided on that, I just. Our goal here has been to spread people out. From a pandemic perspective, that's how we're justifying using a lot of these grant dollars is through spreading people out, so I don't wanna create congestion somewhere. But yeah, utility billing, having that open lobby, we, like this morning when I went outside and we had eight people here, right? And they were all standing outside. Now we're gonna be able to have a lobby that's big enough to hold eight people.
So if I think about what's over now, the old city hall, that'll basically be Scott Perry and the utilities team.
Correct. On one way and then the police department on the other way.
Yep. You'll end up with city administration and building inspection here.
Right.
And financing utility building of the Sunshine House.
All right, Eddie. Back to you, Eddie.
Next slide, please. This is like our, our every year cleanup. I just wanna let you guys, you know, look at what we've been up to. There's a shot of the, where they're on fighting, by the golf course. And over here by the jailhouse. So that's pretty much what we do every year in the creeks. Hopefully, you know, they'll stay like that till early June, July, before the vegetation really starts growing in there. So that's pretty much it on the creeks. Next. So we do our, every year, like I have mentioned before in the past, that we, we go around and do our sign survey. So this year, we are up to 230 signs. That thing, that's including street signs, stop signs, yield signs, dead end signs, any kinda signs out there. So we'll be pretty much it for, for the year. We also have been helping, we started most days again. We, we've had it, we've had this in the past, cuz we had that big motion come in. That time we had that ice storm. And we had that for, we had an Amol check actually for about a year. So the most we have right now is, is, is still quite a bit. So we're, we're, we started last week, so we're gonna do this every third Saturday of the month. So we, we take our loader, we load our, the public with our loader and they seem to enjoy that because it's just an in and out deal. They can take their trailer, their truck, so it works out pretty good. Next.
So Eddie, on street signs?
Yes, sir.
If we say, well, I'll send you a couple pictures, I know I got some that are falling over.
Okay.
One up on Loop Road, you probably already know it, but I'll just send you just in case.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've been getting a lot of people running over our signs, you know, they get into that every now and then and we.
This is, this is not one that got run over, it's just rusted and it's fallen over.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but, but yeah, we get a lot of that. But yeah, go ahead and send it to me and we'll.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, sir. These, this 27 blocks, these are the first 27 blocks we're gonna start seal coating this year. This year, we're gonna start on Ward four and two, which is mainly on the south side. These two wards are some of the wards that we didn't get to last year. And then we're, we're thinking, hopefully, we set a goal of maybe 75 blocks. Reason being that, like I had mentioned in the past as well, that we wanna go back and fog seal the 102 blocks we did last year and then hopefully this 75 blocks, just to preserve our streets a little bit more and and try to last a little bit longer. That fog seal works pretty good. On the next slide, you can see where Jared Dirtwork is gonna do section two and three. Again, we looked at these sections and these are the sections that they're, they need to be redone like now. And most of these streets are high traffic streets as well. So that's why we got together with Lance and we decided to do section two and three. He's, he's committed right now to another project, but hopefully he said that he can start the first of May, if not the latter part of May. So I'm, I'm thinking that it should at least, you know, by July, he should be done with these two sections. And the other slide just is, shows the other sections. So the first section, section two is, is mainly Fifth Street, as you can see all that area, Del Rio, Seventh Street. I'm pretty sure Maria is gonna like for us to start over there on Seventh Street. And Del Rio and Eagle Pass, all that area. So section three will consist of Seventh, Ninth and all that.
Hey, hey Eddie, when he's done with two and three, and then he's gonna pop up to, I forget the section number, but it's the one on Hancock, where he's gonna rework some of that on Bird as well?
Yes, definitely, yeah. That, that's our next section, reason being that that's gonna be time consuming. So we decided to go with that section after these two sections as well because we need, we didn't, unfortunately, we didn't get to address that last year. So, and like I said, it's, it's gonna take him some time there. So right after these two sections, we'll, we'll start right on the whole there. You're welcome. That's pretty much good for our slides. If you guys have any other questions?
Eddie, I got a question. On 10th Street, when it got repaved, not here, about a couple of years ago, they had to dig out for the sewer lids or access points. And TECQ wouldn't let us put a, a ring around it to, you know, to raise the level of the, of the lid where we don't have those big bumps there.
Right.
Do we know anything, whether, whether we're gonna do any work on those things?
Actually, yes, we, we, I touched base with Scott and he's gonna look into that and see if we can go ahead and raise those manhole lids to, to be level with the streets. We got some on 10th and we got some on Brown as well.
Right, I saw the one on Brown.
Yeah, yeah, and it's very annoying. So, yeah, I've actually reached out to Scott and we discussed that. And as soon as they get more lids, he's, he, he's got it on his agenda, so we can take care of that.
Yeah, cuz I think TCQ said that, that we couldn't do it because instead of being, the, the entryways were not made of cement, they were brick.
Yes, yeah.
And so that was my concern about that, cuz I mean, Jesus, you know, it's, it's horrible on drivers going through there.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the solution to that is retake that out and then they got some new type of manholes. I think they're like fiberglass and then, then you can accommodate them with the, with the rings you need and bring them up to level.
Awesome, good deal. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions, and more questions for Eddie? Let's go on to public hearings then. And public hearing, subdue citizens' views, comments on resolution 2021-04-03 regarding the city intent to submit an application for approximately $260,000 in Texas Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Program Funds for sidewalk and related infrastructure improvements in the downtown area. The city's required matching funds for this project will be up to 15,000 if awarded. Do we have any comments?
No comments were received for this item.
Okay, sir, then let's move on to the consent agenda. Minutes, financial reports, department written reports, board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are of routine and administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material on each item and/or has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless required by a council member. In which event, the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in a normal sequence. After the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon, the remaining items will be adopted by one vote, city manager.
Yes, Mayor, this evening we have one item on the consent agenda. It's the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting on March 16th, 2021.
Mayor, I move, we approve the consent agenda as well.
Okay, motions made. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, raise your red hand. Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item eight, information or discussion items.
All right, Mayor, the, the first item is our quarterly update from our municipal court judge, the Honorable Judge Jody Cole. Jody, would you like me to pop up the, the PowerPoint?
Please, I think that would be excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Let me, let me share my screen real quick to. Okay, can you see now, Jody?
Yes, thank you, Eric. So we see that the citations issued in 2020 were 860. And in 2021, we, we are at the first quarter of 387. And so we, and here is Brittany was prepared to give this to you and she's just arrived. Sorry, where were you at? Just at this first slide. Hi, everyone.
Oh, hey, Brittany.
This is our clerk, Brittany Fox, the new court clerk. Okay, so yeah, so for this year, we have had 387 citations that was issued. And that was just from the end of March. Last year total, there was only 860 citations issued for the entire year.
So, so Brittany, the pace has doubled, right?
I mean, it is, yeah, I mean, for, in comparison, so.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah.
We go down, next slide?
Yes, please, sorry. Okay, so. Are we there? So just some little announcements, we wanted to let you guys know that we have been approved to start in-person court this month. So we're going to have court twice this month. One's gonna be for a juvenile docket on the 20th. And that's gonna be a smaller docket. And then on the 22nd will be our main docket. And that'll be in, in person as well as through Zoom. Can you go ahead and go on over to the next slide for me? Okay, so last year, financially, the money that was collected from citations that were issued was a total of $22,590.56. So far this year, there has been $16,353.92. That's just from January to February or to March 31st. They didn't do it through the fiscal year. That's how it's been broken up so far, so.
Yeah, and, and Brittany, I think it's important to note too, a lot of that is from some of these collection efforts. You know, I know, you know, our city attorney's also been working with you. I know even today when we were talking, you know, you've got some of these older cases that people are now paying, maybe they've gone to collections and they are paying. So I, I think that's a tribute to, to really the team effort that's going on.
Yes, sir, there's been, you know, people have been paying citations, you know, since I've been here. You know, I've had encountered people paying citations from 2009, 2014. It's, it's things that, you know, warrants have either been issued or holds on driver's license have been issued back then. And people are finally starting to take care of these situations, so it's, it's really good. Okay, so, since I've been here, there's been a few things that I've just noticed and that would make, I, I feel that will make, you know, it a lot easier for people who do receive citations as well as honestly my position, make it easier. I feel that we need to be, or we will be adding the, the instructions and explanations of what people's options are whenever they do receive a citation. Most people are calling and they don't, they just don't have an understanding of what they need to do or where to start or anything with it. So I've been looking into, you know, other municipal courts and what they have online and whatnot. And then, as well as talking with Jody or the judge. And we're gonna figure out what would be best to put on the website as to doing that. And then we're also going to be interfacing. And then we're also going to be interfacing with a new software. It's called InCourt. And that will allow people to be able to just log in using their citation number and they'll see exactly what they owe. And it'll give us a couple of different links too, for people to just sign up for difference of driving and see if they hit the qualifications and, and whatnot for that. And today, Captain LaSoya, he put on, or he changed the citations. Right now, they only say, like, for court, when anybody receives a citation, it just says, call this number. Nobody really knows what to do. But he put the City of Alpine's website on there as well as my email address, so that way people can, you know, start addressing the situations a lot easier without just only having one option of just calling the clerk's office. So that will help.
So Brittany, Rick Stevens here. If, will InCourt allow someone to pay a citation online?
Yes. We, we currently have a payment, I think it's called the payment group. And it works well, like anybody who needs to pay a citation online, they can. But they don't have any options to look up their citation, see how much they owe, see what their, you know, options are available without personally talking to, to me only. And that's limited, you know, our, our court is only a half, a half day, you know, we're only open till noon. And, you know, we're almost at four hundred citations already, or actually are at four hundred citations already for just this year. So four hundred people who are just being told, hey, you can only call this number. So we're trying to get more availability for people to, you know, take care of their situations quicker and easier.
Yeah, and I like that. And whatever I can do to help facilitate getting that up and going as quick as possible, Brittany. I'll definitely help.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. I did contact them today. They are sending over some, I don't know, some sort of paperwork for you guys to review. So. Okay.
Next slide.
The next slide, yeah. So that one didn't come out quite right. But you can see from two thousand twenty to, and, you know, into two thousand twenty-one, from October, you know, we had cases that were closed just by fines being paid and court costs. And that was at twenty-one and it's very, you know, as low as thirteen. But just this year, January, February and March, we've seen an increase. In January, it was thirty-four citations were just, you know, closed out by just having the defendant call and resolve the issue. February was thirty-six and in March alone was fifty-eight. So that's really good. There hasn't been much along the lines of, you know, motions to dismiss by the prosecutor. There's only been, there's only one last month and none for January or February. And then there has, there was a few compliance dismissals. Those are just, you know, people like got their animals chipped because they had, like, you know, no microchip in their animal. Or maybe they didn't have insurance when they got pulled over, but they could provide it. So those are compliance dismissals. But we've had a few of those since I've been there, but. And there hasn't been anything along the lines with code enforcement because there was a transition in employment and whatnot. But just on this docket for April, there is going to be, I don't even know, I think it's maybe six cases on, on there for code enforcement. So that should start picking up. Any questions on that?
Any questions for Brittany?
Again, talk about, Brittany, you or Jody, case backlog. So there's like seven hundred and fifty cases backlog. What do you see as the normal backlog, relatively flat at the seven hundred range, or are you trying to work your way through that and get it down?
So that is an excellent question and I'm glad that you asked. So I'll answer questions and give some more information. At this point, we, we have been under a tremendous amount of transition. And I think it's safe to say that some of the systems in the municipal court were outdated even before the pandemic. And there's a tremendous backlog of cases. And so the way that we've decided to handle it, Ms. Fox and I, is we are going to keep our normal court dates. And a good example is the juvenile docket. This month is very light. And what we are going to do is bring in the oldest cases first. And we are going to go through those cases with the city attorney. And I'm going to require that those cases be actively prosecuted or dismissed. And so my intention is that we just sit down and get through all of those files and either do something with them or dismiss them. So we're not expending energy keeping up with files that will never be prosecuted. And again, many of these backlog cases preceded just about everyone in the court. And even the previous clerk, she did a great job holding the court together. But there was a transitionary period when there was no judge or city attorney. So we are gonna catch up with that. I don't want us, when we go through our active docket on court days, I do not, I, when we are complete with the active docket, I want us to hit that, the old cases and take care of them. I don't want them sitting and pending on the docket.
So, thanks very much, Jody. So I know Sandy, you're on the line as well. Is there enough of you to go around to address the backlog, Sandy?
Yeah, yes, there is. I've been working on it with Brittany's help. And I've probably broken Judge Cole's wrist having her sign so many motions. When he cleared out the docket, our docket went all the way back, cases sitting in that office to like two thousand five, two thousand nine. And we are now up to twenty nineteen, which is where the statute of limitations starts kicking in. Anything from twenty eighteen on, we've had to let go. And so we are now at twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And we're getting those organized. So we're ready to start putting them on the docket. But we're, we've, I think we've worked well getting it done. And Brittany, she's, she's very, gosh, she gets a lot done in a little amount of time. She's an amazing person. And she's helped a lot. She's helped the judge and I both. But I think we've got plenty to go around and, and we'll work on those cases and get them up here and get them updated. I think we'll have, we'll be in pretty good shape by probably June or July on these cases.
That, that's great news. When I came on council, there was a backlog of three thousand cases. Down to seven hundred and fifty, but you got a ways to go. So that's good to hear. Thank you.
So the next thing, I think that I heard Eric discuss that we'll be moving offices, which is very good. So the court should be completely autonomous. And that is just a trend in the state that in tiny municipal count, uh, communities, often the court was near the police station. And nowadays, you just move it away from the police station and that's naturally occurring. So the other thing I wanted to mention is we will, we are looking into the process of, of starting to compel compliance with tickets. And they, the way that they were handled was very lax in the past. And we are transitioning, so we want to give the community a good long warning. But at some point, we are going to need everyone to take responsibility for their citations and infractions. And we will be utilizing warrants to enforce that. And at this time, we are getting the procedure of the warrants ironed out. And we want to make sure to get the notice plenty, the public plenty of notice before we would take that kind of action. And I want to let everyone know that virtual court is here to stay. I've issued revised standing court orders. And that will, that will include virtual court now indefinitely. So that should be very helpful in disposing cases with court users who are out of town. So we think that's really going to facilitate a movement of the docket so that we're very efficient. And we have, I do wanna let y'all know, we have clerk training for our wonderful new court clerk, Ms. Fox, on the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth of April. And we are also having a Ms. Sherri Woodfin, who is coming out. The Office of the Court Administration provides a service where they will send an experienced person out to look at the court so they can make suggestions on how to have the cases flow smoothly. And Ms. Solis made arrangements for Ms. Woodfin to stay here and be available all of May fifth. So we, we are all just working very hard together to make a court that we can all be proud of. Are there any questions?
Judge, this is Chris. Are you having any issues with failures to appear? And if so, what procedures have you set up to handle those?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
Are you having any issues with defendants failing to appear? And if so, what kind of procedures do we have set up to deal with that?
That's precisely what I just explained. We are going to be enforcing failures to appear utilizing warrants. But we are going to do it appropriately so that people have plenty of notice. And we understand how to handle the warrants and how people will be processed once they're taken into custody. And that is a priority. But we have had increased compliance with people already without warrants. So that's the good news is that is happening.
So when you say that, are, are we talking about allowing them, like, two missed court dates or how long?
We have started making announcements last month. And I would be more comfortable probably in June, starting to issue failure to appear warrants. But we also want a written procedure about how warrants are handled. And at this point, we need to learn how to even withdraw warrants when we get compliances. And once we start issuing failure to appear warrants, we will include on our lighter court days, what we call show cause hearings, which will allow people to come, take responsibility for their citation or offer explanations so that they can dispose of their case and the warrants can be recalled. But first things first, we are just on our third month of having any kind of court. And this month will be the first in-person court that we have. And we also have a new court clerk who is learning all of the procedure. So we will take it one step at a time. But I can assure you that we will be expecting people to comply with court attendance. And we will be enforcing that appropriately. Any other questions?
That's called, only, I've got a comment. I wanna thank you and your team for the great job you're doing. You're moving this thing in a positive manner. And you to be complimented, you and your staff needs to be complimented for that. Great job.
Thank you, Mayor Ramos. And I did wanna mention, the other thing I was excited about is that the departments are now, especially Animal Control, Jennifer Stewart has started forming a class that we will be able to assign people as part of community service, which will teach them better pet care. And what we suspect is that if we start seeing the root of certain kinds of infractions, we can resolve them more with community service and classes so that people are not just paying fines, but actually able to make amends to the community and learn how to be better citizens at the same time. Jennifer, do you wanna mention the class? Do you wanna tell them about the class? And she might not be on here.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, Jennifer.
Ms. Stewart.
Okay, so this is really just a work in progress. I reached out to some people that are in the same field as I. One of them responded from El Paso. Her name is Rose Janice. She actually has a, she teaches a class over there. And so she's been very, very helpful. She sent me a lot of information on how to get a class started. She's actually gonna help me get a PowerPoint together. It's really gonna probably focus on, it's what's called the five freedoms. So just freedom from hunger and thirst, discomfort, injury, disease, expressing normal behaviors and fear and distress. So it's gonna be an interesting class, I think, once I get the swing of it. I've never taught a class before. But this, this woman in El Paso has been super helpful for me. So I'll, I'll keep you guys posted as I get more information and I get that together. And hopefully we can get that done soon. So.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. So that was an exciting thing that we're developing. And I think that can really help bring people into full compliance and help alleviate some of the repeated infractions that we're seeing on the docket. Any other questions?
None, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for letting us share with you.
Okay, let's move on to Councilman Stevens.
Thanks, Mayor. So this is a, this is not a new topic. The next one, it's called Country Club Estates. We're allowed to talk about roads. I put together some charts and really bringing council up to speed on what's gone on in the past and some thoughts about going forward. You know, Alpine Country Club Estates sits, it's on the east side of town, War Cloud, and the other side of Hancock Hill. It was originally planned to be a three-phase development, a hundred and fifty homes. Would have generated about three hundred thousand dollars of pre-year property taxes. Phase one was a hundred acres. The city annexed eighty-eight acres in nineteen eighty-seven in July. In September, the state law would have precluded the annex. So my view was those of us, those who sat at the table before us back in nineteen eighty-seven, never should have done this deal. Because we're in a situation where ten percent of our city roads are in Alpine Country Club Estates. And they don't generate enough money to take care of them. Further, in May of two thousand three, additional thirteen acres came on board. Phase two and phase three were never started. And the specifics about the law said, you, you can only annex property into the city that's contiguous. And if in fact, you do annex a single road going out there, you have to annex a thousand feet on each side. So two thousand feet total, including the road. And none of the property owners who own that would have bought into that. So it never would have happened. So the net result is, there are now, you know, thirty residents out there, thirty homes that generate just shy of forty-four thousand dollars a year. And, you know, they paid the rest of property taxes. There's, there's been a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in property tax. But nowhere near enough to maintain the road, just to maintain the road. If everything was good, it was a minimum a hundred thousand dollars a year. And, and to get that road rehabilitated, and I go out there, like every other week, I was just out there last week and I got a complaint, a phone call on the subject. They said, Rick, we've been talking about this for five years. When are you gonna do something? I said, regardless of whether I wanna do something or not, I am hard pressed to get all my peers in city council to allocate a million dollars, which is, you know, we're trying to take care of the rest of the city. The other, you know, homes that we have here, to allocate it to thirty residents. It's a tough sell, probably not gonna happen. So we're back to where we're at. So, you know, I met with them in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. I said, I got a call last week. We talked about a number of various options. And if we go to the slide titled discussion, you know, I think here's where we're at. The Alpine Country Club Estates, at this point, has said they wanna remain part of Alpine. Why? Because if they're not part of Alpine, then their water and wastewater costs go up, you know, fifty percent. So I get that point, but that's only forty-five dollars a month in terms of additional cost for residents. But we've looked at options that included going into Country Club Estates from Blue roadside, all the way back around. But we'd have to take over some property. We'd have to buy property from a landowner out there. Funds just aren't available. So in my view, there are three options. First, we can allocate the one to two million dollars to remediate the roads. And that certainly council will make that decision. Would that be a hard sell? Given we have a budget of fourteen million dollars a year, we'd be allocating, you know, a lot of money to go do that for, again, thirty residents. Second, we could change the road maintenance plan. And I've talked to the residents about that. One is where the, where the homes are, maintain those roads like we do any other roads in the city, the chip seal. One is where the, where the homes are, maintain those roads like we do any other roads in the city, the chip seal, you know, to keep them up. But change the main road to pack Kalachi. Know it up? Grate it? Pack it now. I talked with the, some other folks about how do you maintain a road that's made out of Kalachi, well, it's stayed. And, you know, the answer is if you don't put any heavy vehicles on it, you can move all the dumpsters out to the entrance. You put drop boxes out there for UPS and all the other trucks that run out there. Then the roads generally stay good for about six months, waiting as fairly as you do. In my mind, if they want to remain part of Country Club Estates, that's a much better way to do it. Third approach is if they want to maintain the roads as is and they force the issue, city council does have the ability to de-annex that area. Again, it's part of Ward 5, but what they're asking for is far more than we have budget for. So I told them again, I'll come back to city council. I'm happy to put a motion on the table at the next city council meeting, either in form of resolution to say, we melt the main road and we'll maintain it as a, as a packed Kalachi road. Or I'm happy to bring forward and force the discussion to potentially de-annex. We'd have to do the public hearing and all that. But I thought it worthwhile to bring up and get council's perspective because some of you have heard this story before. Some of you haven't heard this story before, but I thought it worthwhile putting on the table. So I don't know what, what thoughts you all have. I don't know, Martine, if it was up to you, what would you do?
I'm going to Kalachi.
Okay.
Yep. Focus on the hill, that's the problem.
That's kind of my view. Yeah, Eddie, you've got all the experience with roads. You know what this stuff's about. I've been out there more often than not. I tell you, Eddie and the team have done a great job. Don't know if they can, but unless we're to dig that road up and provide the resurfaces, that's a huge amount of money. And then Eddie can devote resources out to doing what they're doing.
How long, approximately, is this, is the pack Kalachi?
Uh, pack Kalachi.
It all depends on the weather.
Yep. So, so, so there's a main, so to give you an idea, there is one main wash area that comes from Alpine Creek, but that's all concrete. So that's not an issue. So that does not wash out. It's the asphalt that washes out. And so when I talked to Nate Davis out at, what's the name of the?
Sierra La Rana.
Sierra La Rana. All of their roads are packed Kalachi. And I talked to David, I said, how are you doing that on the pack Kalachi? He says, you know, Rick, it lasts six to eight months. When the rain hits, they let it dry out, they blade it, pack it back down. And he says, they don't spend a whole lot of time working on it and it seems to work well. But it's the big trucks that create the issues. So he said, one of the requirements is move the dumpsters down to the entrance. So when the dump trucks come in, you know, that's, that's where they pick up the dumpsters. As long as they have trucks off, he says, you're going to be fine. So yeah. And getting Eddie to blade, not a big deal.
Right.
You know, to go out and blade that thing out. And in my view, much, not sure.
How many miles did they?
It's two miles. It's two mile road out here. I drive a lot. And I'll tell you, when on, there's, there's a road, the first road off to the right, they actually did blade it. They put some emulsion on it, cleaned up. That road's doing fine because you're not getting the heavy, big trucks running up and down there. But my view is over time, eventually Eddie can add that to a sequel approach, pick a chip seal and they'll be far better off.
Is it pretty inexpensive to tear up the road and then do the Kalachi?
And I said, that's a thing to go work, to go get it milled. So my, my record, mill it and grate it. That'd be the first thing. Get that asphalt back in there. If they mill it, grate it, and then pack it, that would be the first start.
Yeah, so we have a four-foot wide zipper area that, so they would, they would basically mill it in those, those four foot, four foot wide sections. And that would be quite a bit of work upfront and then bringing some Kalachi in. Lance Jarrett's got a new Kalachi pit. It's pretty close. And between that, some of the stuff we can get out from CSA, we can get the material a lot less expensive than, than the Iger here. I mean, five bucks a ton versus 50 a ton is what we're paying for the coated rock this year.
Ultimately, what I've tried to do is help Country Club Estates say, you all need to make a decision. It's your neighborhood. It is unique. It's unfortunate that when the developer built it, built it and then beefed, and they were stuck with the homes out there. Frankly, if I was living out there, I would probably be in city council and says, hey, why don't you de-annex us? Or would you make a deal with us that we will pay a premium to maintain the road the way which we want? And that way, the rest of the residents don't have to take care of that. They've not been willing to buy into that approach at all. So I think we're into the Kalachi or de-annex. I don't think there's another option.
So do they ever, they don't have any plans of, of finishing phase two or?
There are so, so since I've been on council, I think when I started, so I, I'll come off council. I've been on almost seven years, as I came on in the middle of another new year, it's only seven years. There were 24 homes out there. There's now 30. So they're building about a home a year. And that's kind of where it's at. And, and I think from a market standpoint, people are making decisions about where they want to build, you know, for what it costs to build out there versus where people are going out to say, well, Sierra La Rana or Sunny Glen. I think people are making decisions and says, you know, if I want to buy and build out the, that the lands, I'm going to get more land as opposed to what's there. Those tend to be oversized lots, but they're not overly huge. So I think people are coming with money or saying, it's a nice area. I just choose not to build there. And they're going to build down south, go out to the west, go out to the north. They just don't see that they're developing that out there.
The people that live up there want to stay in the city.
Well, now they want to stay in the city, although when I talked to a resident here, day before yesterday, we had the discussion, I said, hey, what do you guys want to do? And I, and he said, well, we're going to have this session. I said, you got two options, okay? It's Kalachi the road or de-annex. Why don't you come back with a recommendation? You've got all the homeowners, that's why I've met with before. Bring the homeowners together, make a decision, council can go for it, but we are not going to pay it. I said, I, I don't see how council can go for that.
Councilman, there's been a debate on the entryway to Country Club as to who should maintain the county or the city. And actually, it's in the county. So if it's de-annex, would the county then be required to maintain that road?
So a factor was pointed out to me that says, you know, FM 1703 is maintained far better than the road to Alpine Country Club Estates, and I pointed out, 1703 is a state road maintained by the county. So, but whether the county would do that or not, that's a county decision. That's not ours. And if I was the county, I think I'd be hard pressed. I know going out 1703, there are, let's see, 17. I would suspect there's probably 300 homes out in off of 1703. After the tax base standpoint, they get the revenue to support it. Unfortunately, Country Club Estates has attempted those homes. It hasn't supported by any. It's time.
I think the Kalachi makes more sense for the people that live up there.
Yep.
Because you don't want to leave them in a ditch.
Yeah.
You don't really, I don't, I mean, that makes more sense right now.
That's fair. I, 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 I told this individual, we're going to talk about it tonight. I'm happy. And I told him I would come back with thoughts and then see what they can come back with and I'll make a proposal. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Mayor, back to you.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item number nine. Action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited to, to up to 10 per meeting. After being called upon by the mayor, mayor pro tem, citizens are required to state their name and the ward in which they reside. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property in the city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time available. City manager.
This, Mayor and City Council, item number one is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on resolution 2021-0402, a resolution adopting a new fee schedule for the Alpine Civic Center. Somebody wants to make a motion in a second. I can then go into.
Oh, motion?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made in second.
Yeah.
Discussion.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, as we got to looking at it from a staff perspective, the rate schedule had increased and in your packet, that first colored sheet showed what our current civic center fees were. And then we looked backwards at what the previous facility rental fees were. Because what I've been concerned about honestly is that people are not renting the facility. And I think looking at what are the right price points in Alpine? I felt like we were a little bit higher than what our general citizens were willing and wanting to pay. Talking with Gio and Keela, who are the ones that predominantly take the phone calls with people that are interested. And they told me routinely people would call in, ask for the price, and then you could hear their voice drop and didn't end up booking the facility. And so, so we put some thought into it and came up with a lower rate, getting us back closer to where we were before. The other piece that we had implemented previously was having police officers there renting for security for alcohol-related events. If it's a non-alcohol related event, we don't necessarily need the police officers there. But even talking to Chief Martin, who's here today, you know, we said, hey, look, was 75 the right amount for two officers or can we bring that down? And he said, no, let's bring it down to 60. So we really were thoughtful on this and wanted to get renting of the civic center again. It's, it's the bigger facility in town, hosts a lot of events. In your packets, we also included just some historical data for you on what our rentals were. And, and certainly COVID made an impact on us.
Yep.
But we want the facility to be open. We want people renting it. We want them using it. And we just felt like it was important to, to bring these rates back down. So that's, that's the reason for the item.
So certainly works for me. I think it's good rationale. The only question I have, and it's, it's a myth, lack of impact by, you know, whether for this or not. You can't hang anything from the ceiling anymore?
Um, well.
For decorations?
We, we, we have allowed that. Most people don't have a scissor left.
I know.
If they, if, if they come in and talk to me and, and explain how, how they're going to hang it, then we would allow it.
Okay, okay.
We, we, we really would. Most of the stuff I can sign off on. We just want to know what, what they're doing.
I'm with you. Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah.
Because hanging decorations ceiling, that's kind of important for the ambiance and all that stuff.
Right. Well, so the one place that did use it, the, the Christian Academy.
Yeah.
You know, they had their lights up there and Heath was in there with a, with a scissor left. And, and he does a nice job.
Yeah, yeah. And I understand that no staples. Oh my God.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And, and then, yeah, that, that really wreaks havoc.
Yeah, okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Security is only if alcohol is served? Does that mean that, that if the bar is open or are they, if it's not, are they still able to bring it and not have security?
If, if there's going to be alcohol at the event, we want the security there.
Okay, there's not.
But if there's not, so think of like the prom. The prom that's going to be here, they don't need the security because it's, it's a non-alcohol event. But if there's an event, whether they're having the server come in or they're bringing their own alcohol, if they're bringing alcohol in, we're going to have to have security there. Because we just don't want things to get out of hand.
All right. I'm just wondering if there'll be an issue if alcohol's not being served and there's no security? People coming in that have already been drinking or?
Well.
You know, going out drinking in their vehicles.
It doesn't, I mean, people could hire security, even if they weren't having alcohol. They, they could hire it. I think most of the events are going to want alcohol. It's really what, what we tend to have. And then.
If they give security on their own or?
No, we provide it.
No, she says.
Yeah. We do provide. He's got one for the front, one for the back, right? And that way they can back each other up.
Eric, so what's the cost of us providing security?
Around $60 bucks.
Yes, 60, 60 an hour for the two officers.
Yep.
So that's really our loaded cost for overtime. For officers. Yeah. I mean, a lot of places you're going to spend 60 bucks a person per hour.
Why not 75, right?
Yeah, 75 too, yeah.
The reason I was asking, because we rent our facility also, but if you bring liquor in, they must provide security. We will not pay for it.
Right. They're, they're basically paying us extra and then we have the police officers there.
Okay, well, it's, it comes out of that cost then.
Right, yeah. They pay, they pay on top of their normal rental rate there.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Yes, sir. Call for the question. Questions called for. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number two, city manager.
Mayor and City Council, item number two is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on resolution 2021-0403, authorizing the city of Alpine to participate in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Funding Program. Once we have the motion and, and second, then I've also got Marcy in attendance this evening.
Okay. On our move, we authorize the city of Alpine to participate in the Texas Community Development Block Grant in resolution 2021-0403.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, we have a second, Mayor.
Okay, we've got a second. Okay, discussion.
Yeah, so let's see. Gio, can we pull Marcy off mute? And. Okay, Marcy. Great.
Hi.
Do you, you want to give us just a quick rundown on, on the grant? I know I talked about it a little bit earlier this evening.
Right. Um, and, and we did have the public hearing earlier where nobody, you know, said anything or addressed it at all. So in your packet, council and mayor, you have a briefing on this item. And this is actually regarding two of the resolutions. So the next two items are related to the CDVG Downtown Revitalization Program Grant for sidewalk improvements in the downtown area. So some of you will remember that we did indeed apply for the same grant in the August timeframe last year of 2020. And we were actually not awarded during that cycle. And so Ms. Antrim and I had a phone conversation with CDVG staff, asking, what can we do better next time? Because we would like to reapply. And so taking what we learned, we would like to reapply this time. So the project proposal is the same. The application is a little more beefed up, clarifying some things that they needed to know, et cetera. And the last page, I'm sorry that the map turned out the way it did. I'm not sure exactly what happened in, in getting it into the packet. It's kind of all covered up. But the streets that are included in the sidewalk project for the CDVG grant is essentially, let's start on the, the east side of town from Second Street. So a lot of that street is already done. This is in between Holland and Avenue E. And so a lot of that is already done, but there's a blue line right in front of where the cricket store is now. And the, the tech shop for cell phones, et cetera. So a little piece of Second. A good chunk of Third Street, especially the western half of Third Street. All of Fourth, both sides. It excludes Fifth and Sixth Streets from the project. Both sides of Seventh Street and both sides of Eighth Street, again, just in between Holland and Avenue E. So that's the project area that we're talking about. It's just to renovate the sidewalks, to get them up to ADA compliance, to, you know, enhance accessibility and non-vehicular traffic in those areas. That is technically our downtown Alpine area. Our downtown Alpine area. So that is what I have from the packet explaining to you. So the first resolution. Is essentially authorizing and approving. Cities' application to the CDBG grant program. The second resolution and the next item is an important part of the application process. Which is designating that same area as blighted. And so Eric, I don't know if you want me to pause here and just go through that language with the next item. Since we haven't actually started discussing.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think we're, we're fine just addressing it. Right now, because it, it, they do. There, they do dovetail together. The important thing to, to remember, council is that on. Our application last time, this was one of the things that CDBG came back to. Megan and Marcion and said, hey, look, you didn't designate this as a blighted area. Through a resolution, so we're going to designate it as a blighted area. We know that there's some grass growing in the sidewalks. We know that some of the sidewalks are bumpy, some of them are non-existent. We'll call that blighted, okay? That gives us more points, then, then we'll do that. The other piece I wanted to touch on is. The fifteen thousand that we would come with. We have a line item in our streets budget on maintenance materials. Last year it was forty thousand, this year we had bumped it up to sixty thousand. So that's where those dollars of our match would come from to fund this, okay?
Street really needs a lot of work. There's like zero sidewalk in there, the way pedestrians can, can move back and forth safely.
See, it's blighted, isn't it, mayor?
Oh, terrible, terrible. Alley's look good.
Yep, and. The definition of blighted that we're meeting in that second resolution is included within the resolution language, so.
All right, thank you, Marcy.
This is Rick, just a quick question.
Yes.
Is there a plan somewhere in to go get OPM by the people's money? To improve the walkway between. Holland and Murphy on Fifth?
Yes, it is in a longer term plan with some text connectivity money.
Great, thank you. Is that, that's, that's a main art or we gotta go work?
Any more questions or discussion? Okay, we'll call for the question then. All those in favor of the motion. Raise your right hand. Okay, I can't see everybody. Need some help on this.
All five, mayor.
Okay, and Betty. Okay, so motion carries. Item number three, city manager.
Mister Mayor, I propose we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero four dash zero four. Designating what we just voted to fund as blighted.
Blighted now, is there a second?
Yes, Councilwoman Curry, seconded.
Okay, she's seconded. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We'll move over to city manager.
Yes, item number four, mayor, is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the first reading. Of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one dash zero four in ordinance amending chapter twenty-two. Business article three peddlers to the alp, peddlers to the Alpine. City of Alpine Code of Ordinances.
Hey. Yes, sir.
We approve the first reading ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero four dash zero one ordinance amending chapter twenty-two business article peddlers to the Alpine.
Is there a second? Okay, motions made and second. Any discussion?
I'll just state real quick, I, I, I have to give Gio all the credit on this. He worked this one. He really, he and Keela take the permit applications in and he saw some gaps there and said, look, let's, let's create these updates. Let's have the permits timeout. So, good work, Gio.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Get myself in trouble, which is not unusual. I think the improvements, the orders are terrific, so. Well done for that. The question I have, and it's, this is where I'm going to get myself in trouble. Those who are out peddling for dollars to support their school programs and not sell anything. Don't have to get a permit, do they?
Currently, no.
Currently, no. And, and I, I just philosophically. I was raised in the world, if you want to get money, you gotta earn it as opposed to just mooch it for it. So I. At some point, I think council may want to consider what you do on that. And I know it will create a barnstorm. But in, in my view, I'm just one of those. Hey, my kids ever want anything, they had earned it, they had to go work, they had to go do something. And I'm just not in favor of just handing out. So I've made my social comment, I'll be quiet.
Okay, you did make your social comment and you might be in trouble, but I tend to agree with you there, because we. Do our own fundraisers when we were kids. And it wasn't peddling stuff, it was, you know. Having a barbecue or something like that and selling plates at a specific location. Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none, okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Let's go to item number five.
Mayor, City Council, item number five is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero four dash. Zero two in ordinance amending chapter ninety, article four coin operated establishments to the Alpine Code of Ordinances.
So Mister Mayor, I propose we reverse reading ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero four dash zero two in ordinance amending chapter ninety, article four coin operated establishment to vote about fines. To increase the fees.
Is there a second? Okay, I heard a second there, discussion.
I, I think our city attorney Sandy Wilson did a nice job last meeting articulating some of the proposed changes. That her and, and David had discussed. And then, of course, we, we highlighted those, you know, namely it's the fee and then also it's putting the limit. Of coin operated businesses at four. And then finally, there was some wording at the end where if you had multiple violations, revocation of being able to do business. In the community. Longer term with planning and zoning, and we look at our master planning zoning plan, we'll, we'll come back, you know, a, a year later and look at what zones. Should these really be in? Uh, yeah, we're back down to four. We had five and then we came back down to four, so. Yeah, so this one, originally we had the number of machines in there, but then. You could come back with a conditional use permit to increase that. So like the one over on Murphy Street. They had come with a conditional use permit and increase the amount of machines.
So does that increase the amount for the permit in the year you permit?
They pay us a smaller fee every year for the quantity of machines that they have there. But the majority of the money is really made on, on that permit fee, that three thousand dollar permit fee.
So are we charging enough? Is three thousand the right number? Why wouldn't it be ten thousand or what Chris suggested based on the number of the machines?
There, there's a statute out there for counties and they're not allowed to increase that fee. Past three thousand and so I kind of talked about it with David. If he's here, he can correct me if I'm wrong. We thought we'd stick with the three thousand. It was a thousand per year per permit.
Okay, so, so the max we can charge is three thousand for the fee. Are we precluded from making a charge Sandy for the number of, of a fee per machine?
There should be a certain charge in here anyway, per, per machine, isn't that correct?
I thought there was, I just couldn't find it.
I'll have to find it.
Well, Sandy's looking, I have a quick question. What, does the city have any liability if you're in a thousand square foot building and there's twenty machines in there? And a fire breaks out and we need to exit everyone out. And we've actually over limited our, the machines in that space. Are, are we liable for anything?
That's a good point, city secretary.
But, but that shouldn't be covered under fire inspection.
That's covered under the fire inspection.
Yeah, so fire inspection determines the number of people that can be in a building based upon the number of square feet. Regardless whether it's a coin operated place or not.
Let me see if I can find it. There should be a fee they have to pay, I believe, for each machine. Is that, are you on David?
David's not on this evening, Sandy.
Okay, I need, I'll need to look that up, because I don't show that there's a fee.
Yeah, so, so we'll see this come back again in terms of a public hearing in the second reading. So Sandy, if you can work that, that'd be great.
I will, I will. I'll get that out here in a day or two. Okay, I'll do that, because I don't see it.
There any more discussion on this matter?
Yes, I just had a question, man. If we. If we already have four in the city limits, are we going to put a hold on PNC hearings for any further? Establishments or for the special permits or not?
So the, the new, new applicants would just queue up. So if one fell off, then the next one in line. But their application would be reviewed.
Right, so it would be a max of four.
So they still go to PNC there and then just. Once they're okay, they just on a whole, or they don't go to PNC until then, until there is an opening.
So on new applicants, I know we have a couple. And so from the point they come in, then they just get queued up. And if. One of the existing one closes, then we would review. The next application in line. Since it's. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a nonprofit. Yeah, on the American Legion, no. On, on the nonprofit, no.
Is the American Legion nonprofit? Do, do y'all do, uh, do y'all sell? Products like beer and stuff like that for profit?
Yes, we do have a bar.
I think there may be a stipulation in there. I'll need to go back and look. David and I kind of looked at that.
Yeah, and on the machines, they're in a separate locale with the door between. The bar section.
Okay, I'll look at that and see.
Okay, yeah, we'll look at the Legion.
So to Chris's point. Would it make sense just from a clarity standpoint? To amend the first reading. Section ninety dash one oh four, sub. Machines are in from the capital four.
I think Counselor Stevens, that's going to determine on what Sandy Wilson finds. Whether they actually are selling products for profit.
Well, but a not-for-profit can sell things for profit. That's a not, so not-for-profits are businesses under section five oh one C three. Of the internet of the IRS code allows sale of products for profit. It's just the entity does not distribute profits to members or owners. It all gets plowed back into the services they provide, which are down the basis for when they file the ten twenty-three. You're approved that, so they can sell products for profit, they just don't make a profit for the benefit of the, of individuals.
All right, I, I, I'll, I'll check that and see, because I did read something about it that I wanted to go back to. I didn't even think about the.
Yeah, why don't we come back next meeting with the first reading again? Because I think we're gonna, we're gonna make a couple changes relative to what. The fees should be per machine. Make sure we spell out what the state law allows with that, and then we'll make the determination on the non-for-profit and should that. Count within the number that we have.
Yeah, Sandy, and, you know, also, you know, the profit we made goes back into the city. As far as what the, we donate back to the community.
Okay, yeah, I'll look into that because I just did a brief reading. So I, I'll double check now that I've got a little bit more information to let y'all know.
And, and, and Sandy, I do a lot of not-for-profit work, so I'm happy to give you the IRS codes if you like.
Well, you've got to also look under the local government code and that's where a lot of these regulations for these coin operating machines are. Got to look under the state code as well as the federal IRS code, so.
We want to table item number five.
Do we want to address the fact that we should make the game rooms no smoking? Because our ordinances only reflects for bars.
There's, they should be non-smoking.
Right.
Yeah.
Our, our, our city ordinance prohibits smoking in, in the public buildings.
Yeah.
But it was just for bars.
Okay, so that would take care of it.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so we're.
Yeah, so we'll table that one.
Okay, let's move to item six. City manager.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, item six is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one. Dash zero four dash zero three, a budget amendment for the hotel occupancy tax fund budget.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's made, second discussion.
Yeah, so earlier this year, we had reviewed the, the five. Different projects. And the first four of them. I think everybody was, you know, real comfortable with. And the fifth one. Before we did the budget amendment, I, I, well, let me step back. I think everybody's comfortable with. The Visitor Center Rehabilitation Project as a whole. We wanted to make sure is that we went through and really did some detail around what the cost would look like. To build out the, the bathrooms. The extra patio area in the back, the storage shed and the pavilion. And so. From that point, we had a couple. Meetings out at the Visitor Center. Counselor Sandate was gracious enough to come out and meet with us, talk through. Just the scope of the project. And from there, we really pulled together. The price sheet that's included in your packet that looks at everything down to the fixture level. But the, the construction of, of the additional sections. All of the, the fixtures and things that go into it, the electrical, the HVAC. And then also within that sheet, we added. The. The things that we needed for the storage facility, but then also our patio furniture. That we would be using for the events that occur out there, primarily midweek music and mercantile, but also. Other events that, that will pop up in the future out there too. And so that last exhibit B was a detail on, on that. The quotes that we got. Were, were price quotes. Because the project is so large, we still, if council approves of budget amendment, then we still go out to RFP. And then the vendors would come back and give us a formal bid on each of these. You see, Mr. Baisa was really pretty, pretty much the most aggressive in his pricing. We did. Have U Construction out there, their prices were quite a bit higher. And in fact, just to do the the actual structure itself and the pavilion, they were up closer to two hundred thousand, so. Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mr. Baisa was was a lot less. And, you know, U Construction's given us some good pricing on some other projects, too. I I certainly would would not demean the work that they do, but this particular one, this is what we came together. So we're really looking at a hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars.
And that's one I really need to look at because the price of lumber has quite drupled here in the last few months. I would just look at the price of the internet plywood, uh, your uh, your beans and all that, and it's going to get higher. It's what they're predicting. So we need to take that into consideration that, you know, if we can, if the council approves it, we probably wind up saving some money at the in the long run.
And a lot of what we're doing is is concrete block. So there won't be as much traditional lumber.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Item number seven, Councilman Stevens.
Okay, um. So as you recall, uh, we had a discussion about well, I've gotten a number of of questions from property owners that were not happy with being accountable for rental utility bills. So went and did some research and found out that at the state level, we're not allowed to make the property owners responsible for a commitment that a renter makes. Uh, and so as you recall, we had the discussion about what were our options. Uh, and so when we looked through all this, I came to the conclusion that the best way for the city to make sure we don't get stiffed or renters skipping out was to increase the the amount of the deposit. And so that's really, uh, what this, uh, proposed ordinance is. It is an ordinance amending chapter eighty-eight. So that's the background behind it, the basis for. Uh, you saw the 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 changes highlighted, took the overall response that they have changed the piece. So with that as background, I propose that the city council approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash or twenty twenty-one dash year four dash year four and ordinance amending chapter ninety-eight utilities to the Alpine Code of Ordinances that, uh, takes out the primary customer record as being responsible for the utilities and puts that back on the renter and increases the fee to, remind you, Eric, it's two hundred dollars for gas and water.
Uh, two hundred each.
Two hundred each, yeah. Okay, so that's the motion.
Okay, second. Maria? Did you say?
Yes, okay, she's second.
Yes, very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. That'll help the city out instead of getting stiffed on these utility bills. Item number eight. And that's, uh, Councilman Rodriguez or Councilperson Rodriguez.
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion that we table this for later time and allow the new members of the city council the chance to be on board before we make a change like this.
I I can barely hear you.
I make a motion that we table this and allow the new members of the council to be on board before we make a decision as far as the time.
Okay.
Means.
I'm second that.
Second that, and all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Item number nine.
This mayor and city council, item number nine is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action approving the joint election service agreement contract between the city of Alpine and Brewster County for the May first, twenty twenty-one city of Alpine elections.
So, ma'am, I'll propose that we approve the joint election service agreement contract between the city and the county for the May first, twenty twenty-one election.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion? None? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. And, um, item number ten, we'll start with Councilman Curry.
Um, I don't really have a comment, but thanks for coming, everybody.
Okay, Councilperson Rodriguez.
Oh, along the agenda, ma'am, we got through it really well. Great teamwork, everybody.
Hey, Councilman Sandate.
Okay.
Hey, Councilman Fitzgerald.
Very good meeting.
Thank you, ma'am, and Councilman Stevens.
I'd like to, I agree with everyone. I would like to make special note, I think the court's finally moving along and it's great to see uh, you know, Judy, our judge of call and 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 the team that's moving forward with that. It's, uh, I think they're making some great movement. I think it's really helpful to those who we task to do enforcement, whether it's the the chief and the team, uh, whether it's David for building or Jennifer uh, for all the animal control out there. I think that will make their job a lot easier. I know our strategy is not aimed at trying to collect revenues about getting compliance. So it's nice to see that we've got the judge working with the prosecutor and taking the right actions.
And I'm kind of ditto ditto on that. Also, I'd like to thank the council for approving Judge Cole and to becoming a municipal judge. She's doing a fantastic job in the short time she's been here. So that's great. This one time we move forward on that. Okay, we'll go to executive session. Let's end this meeting, suspend this meeting.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, I propose that the city council move to executive session, discuss two items. An update with the attorney in the Park Hills with Cooper contract, and second, to get an update with the attorney on Union Pacific.
Hey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. We're gonna get out of our regular council meeting and go to executive session in a little bit.
What's this?
Everybody back and forth.
We're back.
Okay, how about Betty?
Betty. All breakout rooms will close in fifty-two seconds.
Okay, we hit fifty-two seconds.
And Betty will be forced back into the main room.
That's how that works. I don't know, I'm gonna get kicked off completely.
Well, theoretically, it could, could boot you off completely, but usually it just pushes, pushes you back into the main room. What'd they say? If you had bought Zoom stock a couple of months before the pandemic?
That well is.
Betty in?
Yes, sir, she is.
Okay. Councilman Stevens.
Oh, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's here. We're back in regular session, Mr. Speaker, if you were legal.
Uh, yes, sir, we are. At seven forty-five.
No action on the, uh, Park Hill Smith and Cooper contract.
Okay. Councilman Stevens.
We need a second.
Second by Maria.
Second by Maria?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. No action will be taken.
We did no action regarding the update on Union Pacific.
Okay, sir. There's a second. Okay, Maria, second it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we adjourn.
And it's not debatable, sir. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
All right, thanks, everybody.